I will just kind of leave that open.
Good afternoon and welcome to the town council meeting. Today is Monday, November the 24th. The time is 6:08. According to the agenda, we will move to item two. Call to order. Ms. Durst, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Page.
Here.
Councilman Brock.
Here.
Councilwoman Frick.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Mayor Griffin.
Here. Thank you, ma'am. Was the agenda posted according to state law?
Yes, sir, it was.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Proton.
I'd like to make an amendment under section two. I would like to drop down items H and I and insert a town manager's remarks, which I believe was omitted from this agenda.
Thank you.
Oh, so it's been moved. Oh, show someone, okay. Well, we can actually change the language to manager now, can't we?
All right, thank you. Any other? I'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Shall I move? Thank you. Motion made. Looking for a second?
Second.
Second made. All in favors? Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it. Thank you. At this time, would you please join myself for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation this afternoon? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would you please join me for a word of prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening. We thank you for allowing us to gather safely in a country that we love so dearly. We ask, oh Lord, that you continue to bless Blythewood, continue to bless the leaders, the residents, continue to look over us and guide us as we transition, pass election with one additional member and the reelection of a standing member. Helping lead and guide us. Please put your hands on us as we begin the diligent work of leading this town forward. Help us work together as a team, as a unit, as we should to move this town forward. Please continue to look over our first responders, military, both domestic and abroad. In these words, we pray. Amen. Thank you. At this time, we will, I will entertain the floor for council member remarks. And I will say, Councilwoman Page for last, but any other members for council remarks at this moment?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Frick.
Councilwoman Frick.
I would just like to take this time to say thank you to Councilwoman Page for your service. It has been a pleasure serving with you. And I know that you will continue to be around and continue to do great things for the town of Blythewood. So, thank you for all that you've done and for the things I know that you will do in the future. And again, it was a pleasure serving with you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Erica. I'd also like to extend a huge thanks to my tablemate, Ms. Erica Page. It has been a pleasure. We've had some fun. Don't be a stranger. Come back and see us. Also, I'd like to extend a welcome to the new town manager, Mr. Driggers. And I apologize for not reading the agenda thoroughly and not realizing that that was there. But I just think that it's, we've got a good council. We'll continue to have a good council. And we're going to get some things done. So, thank you, everybody, for coming. And those of you too, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
I too want to thank Councilwoman Erica Page. I got the privilege of serving on Planning Commission with you and getting to know you first there and listening to how very wise you were speaking to issues that affect this community at a planning commission level. And it's been a pleasure serving with you for two years on council. I'm not going to say it was the easiest two years this town has ever been through. But your input to discussion, ideas, fresh approach was certainly welcome on this council. You're going to be missed. I don't just say that because it's your last meeting. You will. You'll be missed at this table. So, you won't be a stranger to Blythewood, but you'll certainly be missed behind this table. One more thing, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, yes, sir.
And I had spoken to our town attorney about this. Many of you either watching on TV, certainly sitting out there in the audience, had noticed the yellow signs up for Richland County Planning Commission for December the 8th, request to rezone some property. I asked Pete, the best way to handle this, there were two, to go ahead and revise the agenda or handle it in councilman remarks. So, I chose the councilman remarks section. Mr. Mayor, I think it would be appropriate for council, through our attorney, to have him draft a letter to Richland County Council, because that would be our counterpart body, not necessarily Richland County Planning Commission. They need to do their work and be free to do their work. But I do not think it's premature for us to draft a letter to Richland County Council and asking them not to rezone these properties that are contiguous to properties that are within the town of Blythewood, simply because, I mean, I would just point to our infrastructure currently cannot handle that kind of growth on former road. We said during the campaigns, I said it the first time I ran. I said it when I ran this past time. Smart growth. Smart growth is good growth. But to take that swath of land and rezone it residential, which is far more dense than what we allow as a town, would be premature and damaging to Blythewood right now. So, I would like to request that Mr. Driggers, if you could, please get with Pete and come up with some language and let council view it, obviously, before it goes. But we're not going to have time between now and December 8th. And I think we need to preempt this, at least at a county council level. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Before I say, I do echo that and I appreciate that message. A lot of phone calls came in about those yellow signs. And I think a letter is good. And maybe two of us can go to that meeting as well to stand up and let the commission, let the council know as a whole, Richland County, how we are feeling about this rezoning. I think, I think a hard approach, and we can talk offline about that. You and our, you and another council member definitely could go to those meetings and really speak to what Blythewood is and our fear of these large neighborhoods and traps coming. So, to the citizens, we hear you. And we got to figure out how we got to move about it. I also think, too, I would ask staff, is there, is there something that's keeping us, like our Planning Commission, from having workshops with Richland County Planning Commission? Is there something that keeps us from doing that or having those conversations between two commissions?
No, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I think your question's directed at either of us. I don't think there is anything. I mean, just, just the Freedom of Information Act. I mean, if they want to have a meeting with, a joint meeting, planning meeting, it can be, can be done. There's nothing in state law that prevents that from happening. Or, or nothing that prevents the Blythewood Planning Commission from meeting to discuss other rezonings in the area and how it may affect Blythewood's comprehensive plan and things of that nature. And, and, Mr. Mayor, while I sort of have, have the floor here, I just want to clarify on the, I know on December 8th, the Richland County Planning Commission is meeting. And, and what I'm hearing is that Mr. Driggers and I are tasked with coming up with some type of a position statement on behalf of council as a whole?
Yes, sir.
As a, as a whole?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I mean, I would dare say there should be some type of unanimous or majority that, that votes on something like that, I think, before, before taking a position. I, I would hesitate a little bit to draft something. And then for council's review, and obviously, if council is reviewing it, you're sort of approving it, but, but not in public. So, I would, I would just say there may need to be some type of a vote this evening on, on whether to go forward with that.
So, let me ask. Without going back to amend the agenda for some type of a vote, because that's not an item on the agenda, could that letter, could I work with council on a letter?
That, that sounds, sounds a little tricky, Mr. Mayor. Just, just from the standpoint of drafting a letter and then getting some type of a, I don't know, it's whether it's a straw poll or some type of approval on, on that somewhere else also. It sounds a little tricky in that regard.
I think any, I think any individual member of council can certainly communicate your individual position and your concern in your capacity as an elected official of the town. I think certainly the mayor can, can send a letter as mayor of the community that says, "I have concerns about this and these are what my concerns are." I think that can very well be done. But I agree. If the letter that we send says, "On behalf of town council, this is our position," we need to take some form of action that says, "Hey, we as a body agree. That's what we should do. Compose the letter. We'll all review it." But, but I think it's appropriate that it's a, that that directive is established by action of council. It, it's, it's not using, we're not utilizing a resource. It's nothing that requires a public hearing. It's, I think it is one of those things that it truly would be as simple as, under council member remarks, you make a motion for a direction to do that. And then I think that affirmative vote allows us to, again, to write that in, in the form that says, "On behalf of the Blythewood Town Council." And then, and in addition to that, any individual member could send something as well.
Sure, to get it to discussion, because not all members may agree with my earlier statement.
I agree.
I would make that in the form of a motion.
Okay.
So, so the motion I'm hearing is, is a, is a motion for us to send a letter?
For the two of you to draft the letter.
To draft the letter opposing
Opposing rezoning.
Rezoning of that, of that parcel that has been advertised and posted.
As the position of council.
Yes.
Okay. All right, council. So, we have a, doing council member remarks, we have a motion on the floor to send, to draft, for staff to draft a letter, Mr. Driggers and the town attorney, opposing the rezoning for the, before the December the 8th meeting on behalf of town council as a whole.
And I can get you the tax map numbers and the parcels we're talking about. Because there are
I saw the photo. I think all that's on that photo.
It is.
It is.
I think it is. Yes, okay. We're, we're good.
If you saw the photo, you're good.
Okay. All right, motion on the floor. I'm looking for a second. I will second that. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Discussion?
Mr. Bathazar. Is it, does this require 24-hour notice? To take, it is an action. It is requiring a vote or requesting a vote. The only reason I ask is because even though these parcels are not in the town limit, the property owners may take issue with not being afforded the opportunity to speak on this particular action item.
Well, you're right. There is no opportunity right now. Council is taking an action. It is, like Mr. Driggers pointed out, it's not an action that is expending any funds or doing anything, but it would be a council position. The Freedom of Information Act does speak to that. If it is something that is not on an agenda and it is in the form of a final vote, it may, I mean, I don't know why we couldn't amend the agenda right now to add this with a supermajority with some reasons why it needs to be acted upon right now without any, without any public hearing or without any input at this time. There is a procedure for that under the Freedom of Information Act. It just requires some showing and it's just some articulation from council as to why action needs to be taken now without, without a public hearing or an opportunity for the public to speak on it. Again, if there's four of you that vote to, to do that and amend the agenda and have this on there, then make that motion again and, and we can proceed with, with whether, we can proceed with issuing the letter on behalf of council.
Again, again, I don't want to leave from behind. These signs went up. December 8th was put on the sign. We as a council don't have time during a holiday week. Or, maybe we do. I, I would not think we do. This certainly would rise to the level of an emergency situation to allow us to amend the agenda.
Well, that's your reasoning.
Yes, it, yes. That is, like I say, it is, I, I, I'm not the one to say whether that reasoning is, is right or wrong. I'm just saying the procedure may be to have state, or be able to articulate those emergency or exigent circumstances for doing the vote tonight and then, and then go through with it at that point. I mean, it just, it just need, needs an articulation of what, what those reasons are.
And I think part of the articulation of that is, Mr. Driggers, have, have we been contacted by our representatives on county council?
No, sir.
Have we been contacted by anybody on Richland County Planning Commission?
No, sir.
Then I think we need to take a stand before December. Just my opinion. I'm one of five.
Well, then, Councilmember McHenry, withdraw, withdraw your motion and then make a motion to amend the agenda. And add action item to item D under new business.
Yep. I withdraw my motion and move to amend the agenda.
All right.
And add a D.
Under section eight, new business?
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Original was withdrawn and we are adding item D under new business for discussion and action item for a, a council consensus of a letter to be drawn up to Richland County Planning Commission and council. The Richland County Council. Motion made. Motion second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Any nays? Ayes have it. Agenda amended?
Now the previous motion can be made, I think.
We'll do it.
We will do that in new business.
Understood, yeah.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Page, it's been an honor serving with you since Planning Commission through council. Discussions and plenty discussions, good and bad, but that's part of what we do in positions. We agree to disagree, but we both share the same sentiment of moving the town forward. You're a neighbor, so anything I can do, let me know. Best wishes to you and your family. Get you some rest. You are free on Mondays moving forward and special call meetings moving forward. But you are more than welcome to join us at any time. So, it's been an honor. Thank you for your service, ma'am. And we apologize. Well, we had new business rolling in, but that's part of the territory. But the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. What just occurred would be something I would love to see more of. I challenge each of you guys to think critically with regards to what our town needs and deserves. Hopefully, we do not have to be reactive. We can be proactive with regards to where we see ourselves in the next 10 years and so forth. And just being good stewards of leadership, listening, please. You know, especially from those of us that live here. And please ask for our help. I mean, and, and that's both sides. You guys need help? We come to the town and ask for help. And then you guys need help and having action items actually happening? Please lean on the public. There's so many people that know so many things and that's been the best part of why I do the things that I do is because I get to meet people and I get to hear their story. And anything that I can do to, you know, hopefully have just a little bit better than what we have today, that would be great. So, I'm super excited for y'all. I'm super excited for Ms. Hovis. You know, I really appreciate you serving and all of y'all as well. And please, just let me know if y'all ever need, you know, a voice of reason or just conversation, because you know I like to talk when you get me going. So, but anyhow, thank y'all for, you know, the staff and everything that y'all do. I know it's very challenging to serve, you know, to work with these guys. So, but anyhow, yeah. I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, please give Councilwoman Erica Page round of applause. No, no, no. Stay suited. You still got some work to do. All right. We can skip mayor's remarks this afternoon. We'll move to the approval of the minutes from the town council regular October 27th meeting and the special call meeting for November the 10th. I'll be looking for a motion to approve those minutes as presented this afternoon.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion made. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Second made. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it. Thank you. At this point, we'll move to item A, municipal election results. Mr. Driggers.
Yes, sir.
Contained in your packet is the certification of the general election for council that is coming to us from the Board of Voter Registration and Elections. It would be appropriate for us to have a motion to receive those results into the record of the town so this becomes official, an official part of our town records.
Thank you.
And let me mention also, just along these same lines, the Secretary of State's office last week issued an amended certificate of incorporation for the town of Blythewood that basically just reflects the amendment of the form of government to the, to the council manager form of government.
Thank you. Any questions from council? All right. Mr. Driggers, we will be entertaining a vote to receive those election results. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Motion made. Looking for a second? Second made. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I'll ask the Honorable Judge Deidra W. Hightower to come up to administer the oath of office to Councilwoman, he led, Patricia Hovis.
We're going to give her a mic. It's a fake pocket. Thank you.
If you could repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties of the office
to exercise the duties of the office
to which I have been elected
to which I have been elected
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof
and preserve
and preserve
protect
protect
and defend the Constitution of this state
and defend the Constitution of this state
in the United States
in the United States
as council member of the town of Blythewood
as council member of the town of Blythewood
I will equally
I will equally
fairly
fairly
and impartially
and impartially
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
and skill
and skill
exercise the trust opposed to me
exercise the trust Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
At this time, the Honorable Judge Deidra W. Hightower will administer the oath of office for Councilman Rich McKendrick.
Okay.
If you could repeat after me, I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution of this state.
And defend the Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As council member of the town of Blythewood.
As council member for the town of Blythewood.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly.
Fairly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect according to law.
And carry into effect according to the law.
The purposes for which I have been appointed, elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, do y'all wanna take a picture together?
Sure.
Sure. Bye, Barbara.
Bye.
I love you.
Congratulations. Councilwoman Hovis? The floor is yours for remarks, ma'am.
Thank you, everybody that is here this evening. I appreciate your support, I appreciate your vote, I appreciate your concern with the town of Blythewood, I appreciate your input and, um, just thank you, everybody.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember McKendrick.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Driggers, Pete, staff, and those people who are here, particularly my family, my wife, um, my two kids who couldn't be here this evening because of little ones, I certainly appreciate the trust that the town has placed in me, um, as a result of this past election. Look forward to serving another four years. Will certainly, um, miss Councilwoman Page, who we've thanked already. Look forward to serving with, uh, Councilwoman Hovis and certainly with the other council people I've had the opportunity to serve with for the past four years. Really look forward, I, I said this, um, through the campaign and I do believe it. Blythewood has so much going, so much more going for us than we have going against us. And with council, with leadership, with the change of form of government which will make leadership easier. I, I really do think our best days are ahead of us. Uh, there's work to do for both constituents and elected officials, but I, I think we're up to the task. So, thank you, thank you, Judge, for being here.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting is designated for the public comments as provided by the municipal ordinance. Public comments must be limited to the items on the agenda, but always let you speak freely on the floor, on any item. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to address council. All comments will be entered into the official record and no action will be taken during the hearing itself. Do we have anyone signed up? Thank you. Anyone that wishes to speak this afternoon, I always pause. Hearing none, public comment is closed at six forty. Collective body working together to always continue to improve, so, uh, well received, thank you. Next item is boards and committee updates. Delco Meadows Park.
Mr. Mayor, I spoke to Councilwoman Page, she said that they have no remarks, they, they did not meet.
Thank you. Myself with Central Mittlands Council Government, we at the end of the year, but, uh, my goal is to make sure that we, uh, get some money on the board to start really looking back at these roads and I'm gonna have to piggyback off of some penny tax, uh, pieces with Councilman McKendrick 'cause a lot of what we do kinda washes over each other at some point in time, so we definitely gotta increase our communication on some of these things moving forward. I am honored to serve on their executive, um, um, leadership piece now for the Central Mittlands Council Government and that gives us the, uh, competitive edge to make sure that we get our projects on the board, that we get in line first for funding, so, uh, one of the things, I know we all talked about it one time and I told them, uh, make sure we get some nice gateway signs coming up, coming into Blythewood. The interstate is messed up right now, so it won't hurt if we dig a little bit more, but we need some nice signs to let people know that we are proud, uh, to be Blythewood. Next is Richland County Transportation Penny Tax Advisory Committee, T-PAC, Councilmember McKendrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, there is a meeting, there was a meeting this evening, but it went on at the same time as our reception, so I missed that meeting, but I will, uh, review those minutes and report next month on where we currently stand.
Thank you, sir. Next item is staff reports. Item A, financial reports, our finance director, Ms. Jennifer Edwards. You gotta get used to the mic.
All right, for October, our, um, income was five oh three, five hundred and three thousand seventy dollars and twelve cent for year-to-date.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for finance? Hearing, yes, sir, Councilmember.
I do have a couple, and, and either Jennifer or Ed, either one, if you could help me with these. Did we make the twenty thousand dollar grant payment that was taken out last month? It showed on the report last month, did we make the correcting?
The auditors are supposed to accrue that back.
Accrue that back.
I noticed that it's still listed on the.
Okay, great. And then, secondly, um, I'm aware of the, the bank cards, debit cards or credit cards that are out to staff. We have a staff member that has not been here for some time that has charges on here from a debit card. Are those reoccurring charges that would be hitting that card?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the individual does not have use of the card, but the card number has recurring expenses for operational, um, expenses here and there.
I thought that was the.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Driggers.
We have possession of that card.
Mr. Driggers, there had been discussion amongst members of council to potentially eliminate these cards. When would be a proper time to have that formal discussion?
I would be glad to have that discussion, uh, with, with anyone individually or with council, uh, as a group. Uh, I will say that from an operational standpoint, I do believe that either purchasing cards or credit cards are necessary as part of the operations. Um, the, the, the most important part in that is the review of those. How do we review the invoices and how do we substantiate that the charges are appropriate for our operations? And that has been put into place.
How far back are you going to go? Because I have signed checks for credit card disbursements and it's just payment to, for citizens or whoever the issuing, uh, financial institution. There, there was, uh, my understanding is that there was no review process at that time to determine whether charges were necessary or not.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and quite honestly, I can't speak to that, so I don't know whether that review was happening or not, uh, but I can assure you that those reviews are taking place now. Um, we, I, not only do, uh, not only do I review the credit card statements, but we're also reviewing once we make payment for those. There's actually a second process and we then go back to our department managers, uh, and they review our entries on our financial reports to make sure that we are charging things to the right areas, but I am doing the review of the appropriateness of the expenditure.
And what action is taken if you discover that the charges are inappropriate?
Well, I'll have to cross that bridge when I get there.
Fair enough.
But, but if there's inappropriate use of public funds, that would be a serious infraction.
Well, we've already had that before.
It was serious name.
More serious now?
More serious. No, it's, it's, it's equally serious, uh, but again, I, I can't speak to expenditures prior to me doing those reviews. I just can't speak to those. And so what I can assure you is that those reviews are taking place now.
Okay, but I guess.
And, and other than that, it would require an audit, a, 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 more of what we would call a forensic audit to look at each and every one of those expenditures. Um, there is, uh, and I think, here's the thing, and, and our auditors do this for us as well. There is no foolproof methodology to prevent fraud. You simply put in measures that gives you the ability to catch that if it occurs. But there is no one hundred percent methodology that I have ever been exposed to and I would challenge any of my folks that, that deal with this, you know, on a day-to-day basis. Uh, Councilwoman Fripp, I know you were involved in this, uh, in, in your professional world, it, it's, it's.
It happens.
It, it happens there, I mean, you, you wanna do everything you can to prevent fraud and, um, and so, I mean, if you want exam, I mean, an example. I don't only monitor that we're purchasing gasoline for equipment and vehicles, I'm monitoring how much gasoline we are purchasing for specific vehicles. If, if I've got a vehicle that's getting twenty miles to a gallon and that's kinda what's happening and now all of a sudden I see that that vehicle's getting six miles to the gallon, well, I've got a pretty good idea that gas is going somewhere else and so I have to investigate. We've not had that happen, but I have had that happen before. And so, uh, you, you, you just have to put in a checks and balances system. We, we don't, we don't have the resources that we can do that for every single purchase, but I, I really can't ask, I can't ask our grounds crews to use their own resources to purchase fuel to operate lawnmowers and equipment and me reimburse them. I need to give them a means to make those purchases. But what I also can do is I can restrict those cards, that they can't be used at, oh, let's say, the liquor store. They can't be used there, they won't be accepted. You can, you can restrict these types of purchasing cards specifically for certain types of uses. We control the, uh, the credit limits on those vehi, on those, uh, individual cards, uh, and we monitor that as closely as we can. So, uh, if, if the question is, do we monitor this and do we, do we look at it? Absolutely. If the question is, can I assure you beyond a shadow of a doubt there would never be an expense that would, that could get through? No, sir, I can't make you that assurance.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm trying really hard for it not to happen.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions for our finance, financial report? Hearing none, marketing and special events update, our marketing director, Ms. Jordan.
Good evening, council, um, just giving some updates on some events coming up. The Christmas tree lighting is November thirtieth. Um, Blythewood will have a rock painting station starting at three P.M. and then we'll continue until the ceremony starts. Um, pre-ceremony music will be at four thirty and then the ceremony starts at five. Um, we have the usual clubs that provide refreshments for free, cookies, um, hot chocolate and apple cider. Um, that's Blythewood Rotary, Hope Optimist and Civitan Club. And then I do believe you guys are discussing tonight the fill-the-sleigh situation, so, um, I'll leave that to you guys. You guys, I think, are all kept in the loop on that. Um, and then, of course, the Christmas parade is that following Sunday, December seventh. Road closures will begin at one thirty. Um, that has already been posted on our website, that's going in the newspapers, both news, political newspapers, social media as well. We're gonna start staging at eleven, but the roads won't close until, um, well, two roads will be closed between twelve and four, four staging, but the main roads won't be closed until one thirty. And then we have about sixty entries for the parade, so we're super excited about that, more than last year. Um, and then we have eight sponsors, so that's also really exciting. And then, of course, roads are expected to reopen around five, um, but it depends on how many people show up and, and all that, so, um, that's pretty much all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Jordan?
Jordan, I have a question. Uh, you said eight sponsors, is there like a sponsorship package that we have as it relates to the parade that is sent out? And if so, can I get, I'm not saying that, um, I'm gonna, uh, you know, have a sponsorship for this year, but I would just like to actually see that package and then, you know, maybe council have the opportunity to get some sponsors as well, like for next year, so that we know in advance.
Yeah, for sure, I can, I can definitely send over, you know, what we have on our forms or I can elaborate now, which, whichever would be helpful.
You can just send, send it to me, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
No problem.
At this time, our town manager report, Mr. Driggers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, yes, as the agenda was prepared, we operated with a town administrator. Uh, we roll in tonight and you have a town manager. And I have the privilege of serving as your interim town manager, uh, and we'll talk briefly here in just a few moments about what that looks like and, and how things are shaping up with that. But a couple of activity items I wanted to share with you tonight, uh, has been touched on by certain of folks. I made a note relative to our new decorations, I need to shout out on that. And you're wonderful out there. A note relative to our upcoming tree lighting, we, and we, another shout out on that. It's a wonderful opportunity for us to be able to, um, and you're gonna talk to a little bit later about some additional, uh, opportunity with that tree lighting and then, of course, the community Christmas parade. Who doesn't love a parade? Um, and so, really, really looking forward to that. But I also wanted to take an opportunity to publicly thank Jordan Langley. Uh, Jordan is a one-person shop that's pulling all of that together. Um, and it's no small task, uh, to just the, the sheer, um, contacts that have to be made for lining that up, doing the logistics of the staff that needs to be present. Who needs to be there, where do they need to be, uh, what are, you know, again, uh, what is each person's role in that? And, um, she has just done outstanding. And, um, she has just done outstanding job with that. So, Jordan, I wanted to say publicly thank you for your effort on that. We're looking forward to those events. Uh, and, um, she just does a superb job for us. So, yeah, to share that with you. Uh, also, I wanted to let you know, uh, we did get the Manor Fiber Optic project completed. Uh, that was a five-day project that was scheduled. Uh, they came in and worked early, early in the morning, but late, late at night, and they finished it in two days. And so that meant we did not have interruption to our business operations in this facility for the Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of the week that we were scheduled for that to be shut down. Uh, so we, we did not have access to, uh, internet services in this building on that Monday to Tuesday. But they got it up before they left on Tuesday evening. Uh, they'll be back in, I think tomorrow, actually, uh, doing the certification on the fiber that has to be certified. And, uh, they'll finish up that certification, but that's in town hall. And that project went really, really well. Uh, so glad to have that completed. Um, and, um, I have great confidence, uh, that the quality of this work will serve us for many, many years to come. Our next step now is to, we have cameras that had been installed in the park, but we were not able to get connected because we did not have bandwidth. That bandwidth is now there, and we've reached out to that vendor, and he's coming in to get those connections made for us as well. So we look forward to that work being completed also. Just as a, uh, note of information, our farmer's market, uh, has completed for the season. A very successful season for those folks. It was always nice. It's one of my favorite activities on Wednesday afternoon before I headed back wherever I was going, uh, to, to stop in and take a little something back to the house. Uh, one of the folks that, that he did as well.
Bring mics on. Mics attached. I'll go closer. Do you want to go faster? Very, very good. That's for anyone who's ever been at the pavilion in Myrtle Beach. You, you, you gotta know the reference. Um, I want to also share with you, you've received information, uh, relative to the Municipal Elected Officials Institute of Government. You should have received this information. I am going to challenge you that every member of this council to be certified a graduate of the Municipal Elected Officials Institute. Uh, there are two levels of that. Uh, there's the, uh, the, the, the main area, the main entry area, and then there's an advanced institute. Uh, our objective that I'm asking of you is to consider, uh, one hundred percent participation and completion of that program. We have one member of our council who is a graduate of that program. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Brock is a graduate of that, uh, has completed all of the required courses, and that's wonderful. And we have others that are now enrolled in, uh, a December session. And then we also have others that are enrolled in the session that'll be along with the Legislative Action Day uh, in Columbia when we, when we gather for that. And so, uh, Ms. Durs has sent information out on that. If you're not sure exactly which class you took, maybe it was a year or so ago, we have your transcripts. And so, uh, stop and see us. We can let you know what's needed, uh, to complete those. Uh, there, there's no time requirement on that. Uh, and if you ever take a class, you don't have to retake a class. It, they just build on it, but you have to complete each of those. So, um, please, take a look at that. Uh, continuing education for elected officials, uh, is critically, critically important. Um, the folks at the Municipal Association do a wonderful job with these sessions. Uh, some of them, uh, you, you can do remotely, some of those you do in Columbia. Uh, but we're ideally located to, to be able to get over and do those. So for those folks who are registered now, thank you so very much. Uh, for those who are considering it, if there's anything that I can provide as information, uh, to get you to be involved in that, I'll, I'll do my best. Um, I am a graduate of the Municipal Elected Officials Institute. Because as you may remember, many, many years ago, I was an elected member of a city council. Uh, and when I was elected to that office, uh, I, sir, I participated in the institute uh, and graduated from that same institute. They assure me that the information has been updated in the last thirty years. I do want you to be aware that we have received the preliminary audit report for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. I am in the pro, I mean, literally, like, I got it today. Um, so I am in the process of reviewing that. It will be on your agenda for December fifteenth. The auditor will come in and present that to you. Uh, it's my plan to put the audit in your hands next week. So you will have a really extended period of time to look through the audit report, um, make any type of questions that you may have, so that when the auditor is on site with us, you're very well prepared to be able to answer any questions on that. Uh, so again, we're gonna verify on that twenty thousand. We know what was supposed to happen. We'll verify that it was handled correctly. If not, we'll get it corrected. Uh, but we'll, we'll get this in your hands next week. Um, it's my reading for the Thanksgiving holidays. So, um, I'll, I'll be involved in, in reading that audit here over the next several days. Um, and, uh, again, thank you for the opportunity for you folks to do, uh, the reception. Uh, at the beginning of the meeting tonight, I wanted to offer, uh, because I've received an actual, a lot of questions, uh, about, about that. Every community has traditions, and I respect those traditions. Um, but I want you, I want you to know that, um, my inquiry into the reception we held tonight was simply of, as a matter of when it allowed you to be more focused on the business of the council this evening. With all respect for tradition, anytime, uh, that I need to know about those things, please make sure that I know about those. Um, but I, I did consult, uh, with various members of council on that decision. Um, and I was even inquired, someone said, well, we never know how many people are gonna come. What do you do with that leftover food? Well, I want you to know where it goes. We're gonna send that over to our good folks that handle public safety in our community, our firefighters and our sheriff's deputies that work here in this community. We're gonna be sending that over to those folks, uh, so that they can enjoy and use that. But we encourage you tonight, or any of our guests tonight, if you would like to have any of that to take with you, please do. Um, but anything for this event and other events that we have as a community, uh, it is our practice that we share that with our public safety officials here in the community. Uh, it has, I've done that for many, many, many years. And I'll tell you, it, their, their faces light up when you walk in the room with food. And, uh, and these folks, many of these folks, our firefighters, they, they're on duty twenty-four hours a day. And they're away from their families, and when a treat can come in, it means all in the world to them. Uh, and our, and our sheriff's deputies, they get to enjoy that as well. The, it's a nice way to say thank you for the work that you do in our community. So it's always for us to enjoy, but we also want to make sure we're good stewards of how we use it. Uh, when we leave this place. So, just wanted to share with you how that is handled as well. Um, so if you'll indulge me for just a couple of moments, I do want to share with you, um, a, a bit about the change that we are now involved in relative to our form of government. Uh, as Pete shared with us, as your town attorney has shared with you, uh, our, our charter has been revised and issued to us by the Secretary of State's office. So we're completely official. All, all legal requirements have been met. Um, and as of today, as we, as we embrace and embark in this journey with a change in our form of government, there will be challenges in this change, and there will be opportunities in this change. And we're absolutely convinced that we're, we're gonna be able to meet those challenges and those opportunities professionally. We're gonna do that in a way that's gonna be in the best interest of this community and in the desire of our five-member council. Um, it, it's, it's my objective during this transition, uh, that, that, you know, I will be working in that capacity of, uh, of an interim town manager, but understand, one of my highest priorities is to, is to help you find a full-time town manager that will be here to serve you and to work with you for years to come. Uh, I am committed to you during this process. Uh, we will do what we need to do, uh, but we need to be intentional, uh, about how we move forward. And I don't think there's anyone in this room that hasn't heard that. Uh, but sometimes I feel, you know, I just, I just feel inclined to share that, uh, again. Um, I wanna, I wanna share with you a little bit about, that our new roles. Um, and so you've, you've seen the ordinances, you've seen the information. Confused during the, uh, the referendum question about roles of council, roles of, uh, staff, roles of the manager, if, if that's adopted. Um, I want to commit to you that in, in, in my role, part of that is communications. It is a large part of my duty and my responsibility to keep you informed. Now, there's a caution in that. Keeping you informed may not mean that you know everything that I know. You may not know everything that someone else knows. But it is important that I communicate with you those, those, the data, the information that you need to fulfill your duties and responsibilities as an elected member of this community. And so I'm gonna strive to do that to your satisfaction. If I fall short of that, I request that you help me with that. I'll attach it to my lip. I, I know, um, but I understand that they have to do a form of that there. Um, but my role in, in doing that will be to remember, this, this is what I really want to share. Remember that as your interim town manager, I am your consultant. I am the person that you have drawn in who has a certain level of experience, information, knowledge, expertise. And, and you will be ultimately bringing someone that will have the attributes that you're looking for as well. But as your consultant in that capacity, I do need to remind all of us, including myself, um, is that I am not an employee of the municipality. I am a contract consultant to you, to assist you through this process. And the best way that I can do that is hearing from you about what your expectations are. And the more that I hear that, the better I am going to be prepared, uh, to try to meet those expectations. In, in this role of interim town manager, um, you know, I, I still will continue to be here two to three days a week. That's, that's what I've been doing. I'll continue to do that. I am on call all the time. You may, you may reach out to me. You may reach out to me at any time, uh, but, but there's never been an occasion that we can't manage. Um, and if I'm not immediately available, I try really hard to get back with you. Sometimes I miss that, and you reach back out to me, and that's wonderful. Uh, again, my role is to keep you informed, make sure that you have the information you need for the decisions, uh, that you need to make. So I'll continue to be on the ground here. I have some questions. Does that mean that I'm gonna be full-time during the transition? No, I'm still in, I'm an interim. And in that interim, I will continue to fulfill the contractual obligations that we made before I came on board. But always note, I'm accessible to your staff, and I'm accessible to you. Um, and we'll continue to employ them that way. Um, I will have the responsibility for managing the day-to-day operations. And I will do that by using our staff and the resources that you make available to us to do that. Uh, and so that's why it's very important, uh, you have an agenda item this evening talking about town events. Um, and I've shared with every one of you, i- it's, you know, we, we don't take a posi, staff, we don't take a position what, of what we should or we should not do. We will give you information. You will tell us what we should or should not be doing. But I need to know. So that we can plan accordingly and appropriately. And that we understand what resources we have to do those things. So that's just an example of, of how we'll do that. There'll be some information relative to our, our interactions with our staff. Again, you, you pass the ordinance, you know what the ordinance says. Uh, I've been very clear with our staff, uh, as we've been preparing for today, uh, and saying to them that it is not my expectation that council members don't communicate with our staff. There's a real difference between communicating with folks. Hey, what's going on? How's it going? How are things going? Are, are there resources that are needed? There's a difference in that and giving staff direction. Because what we're trying to achieve is to be as efficient as we can with our staff resources. And so we may have work assignments for today that we need to get completed today. Um, a- and there may be a request for us to do something. Our staff will get very confused if they get conflicting instructions. And so we're trying to channel that in that direction. I am confident we're gonna be, we're gonna be well in that area. But do know, the staff and I have been meeting on this for, since the referendum passed. And, and we've been preparing for this, and we're well equipped to do that. But what I need from you, I need to make sure that you're being very clear about policy. You're being very, very clear about priorities. I need to make sure that I'm, that, that. That you're giving me good instruction about ordinances that you want to see in place, if they don't exist, amendments to ordinances, if that needs to be made. Um, but those, those are your tasks, establishing priorities, enacting ordinances, uh, developing policy for town, approving budgets. My role will be to present you with information. Your role is to tell me what resources are available to do the things, to meet your priorities that you've appropriated through the budget. And you'll have to work through a few things to do that. And you'll be, you'll be hiring a new town manager. You'll be, your, your responsibility is, uh, to appoint your town attorney, your municipal judge. You know those things. And then all of that is in place for us. Here's what we know. Change can be difficult. Every individual reacts to change in different ways. Some of us embrace it, some of us fear it, some of us want to kick it down the road like an old tin can. I understand that. And I know that you understand that as well. But we are in a change situation, and we will learn from each other. We will grow from each other. We will meet expectations as we learn and understand those expectations. It's gonna be very important for us to get there. Change can be invigorating. It can be exciting. It's newness to it. Patience is gonna be necessary in this process. And I want to tell you, passion is gonna be very appreciated. We will make some mistakes. I think you as a body will make some mistakes. I think. I, as your interim? Will make some mistakes. And I think our staff will make some mistakes. We will each learn from those, and we will grow from those. Um, and so I do ask for that compassion as we, as we navigate this new way. I've identified some priorities that, that I want to share with you this evening and, and ask for your consideration. Um, I've had an opportunity now, I think, to talk with everyone. It's one way or another, either in person, by phone. We've communicated back and forth. Um, but, but there's some things that I need to ask of you as we go forward here. Uh, one, I would like for you to consider moving your strategic planning session to January. I think that it is important for us to get through the holidays. It's a very busy time. Allow us to get through the holidays. It's a very busy time. Allow us to get through the holidays. But let's do that strategic planning session as soon as we can. Let's, let's hit the ground running in January so that we now know from you what those priorities are. So I'm establishing it as a initial priority. And I'm asking you then to embrace that so that we can look at all the things that are important to you and how we want to move forward with this. Um, at the expense of beating the dead doors, a priority for you is to begin the search for your new town manager. It's just important. Um, I, I, again, I will work with you and I will do whatever you need of me through that process. Uh, but it's gonna be important for you. As a council and it's gonna be important for our staff and it's important for us. As a community to move forward in that. Uh, I'm asking you to develop a plan for this facility. Don't go matter, uh, whether it's through, um, the, the subcommittee that's been formed, whether it's through us considering. Any type of, of assistance in helping us identify business plans or that we look at any other type of operational models or structures. But we just need to make that a priority. How are we gonna do this and what's our path forward relative to this facility? One of my priorities moving forward is, is hiring our new planning manager. Um, I've sent information over, uh, to Jennifer on the HR side of her responsibilities. And, and we are laying that out and we are beginning our search for a planning manager. I think that's gonna be critical for you so that you can complete your work on, um, your land development regulations, on your, um. Zoning ordinances, all of that is gonna be critical for us to get that moving forward. To your point earlier about what is the town's position relative to development of properties outside our town limits. That is a perfect example of what we need to be on top of. We need to be communicating with other jurisdictions about what their zoning means to us. Um, because to my knowledge, we probably weren't involved in the development of their zoning for certain parcels. Maybe that a long time ago. Uh, but I can assure you, I have not had those types of communications with anyone, uh, at the county level. And we need to. Uh, and so we wanna get that position up and running. Um, the fifth, you know, that I think is important for us to look at right now, um, is our organizational structure. Uh, and so I'm talking about that at the staff level, uh, a review of, of all of our, uh, all in class. We need a review of our staff positions. We're a very small staff. We need to review what people are doing and are we using their talents to the best of their ability and that we get the best out of them that we can. So I, I think that this, uh, there could, there could be some realignment that's necessary with that. But I think that realignment can be good for our employees. I think that realignment can be good for us as an organization. There'll be some that there's no realignment. Because we're doing exactly what we need to do. We just need to be open to that, but we need to go through that process. Uh, and the last thing that I, that I'd like for us to consider, uh, as priorities, uh, is that we're probably, once we complete the strategic planning session, be prepared then to do a budget amendment. And I've shared with you a lot of information about what I think are the pros and cons of budget amendments. Um, but, but for the remainder of this fiscal year, it's gonna be important for, for me or anyone who's in this role, uh, is to know what those resources are and do those resources match up as your priorities for us. Um, we couldn't wait, but that would be us waiting to join one and doing all of that work in the first quarter, early second quarter of, of twenty twenty-six. I, I, I don't wanna lose that momentum. I wanna, I wanna get in front of that, uh, so that we're not in a lull. We're not lagging, uh, trying to decide when to move forward. Now, that's only six things that I've identified, but I can assure you. If we do that six, it's gonna keep us really busy. Um, and, and, and it will keep us very focused. And when we get to January, you can add to that and we get to start really looking at those things that are high priorities, uh, for you. What I've always said to elected officials is that when you run for public office, you have things that you wanna see done. Everybody does. And, and, and so if we can get a consensus as a group on what those priorities are and then we can determine what is appropriate funding for those and we're all singing off the same sheet of music, we can accomplish some really good things.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Certain available free questions that anyone should have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Any questions, comments for council?
I'd just like to make a comment in saying that I am, well, I appreciate you. I, I believe we all do. And, um, I'm just looking forward to the open communication, being included and moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driggers. If you don't mind, sir, can you send that out to ca- members of council so we can have that electronically on your priorities?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, old business. Item A, food drive project and funding action item, Councilwoman Frip.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as we have discussed previously, um, and I think that I've, I've spoken to, uh, the majority of you all with regard to a council project and us actually doing a, um, a community food drive. And, um, with, with the majority of the donate, oh, I should say all of the donations going to CAB. What I am proposing tonight and I'd like to, uh, discuss and actually, um, get a vote on is a dollar amount or if the council, um, has the appetite to actually fund, um, some additional funding to CAB. I've not determined a dollar amount, but again, I have spoken with a couple of you who say, you know, we should, um, actually purchase on a, I think a weekly, am I, am I, oh, Councilman Brock, he stepped away. Um, eh, on a weekly basis for maybe like the next eight weeks because we talked about this project going through January. So, um, so I really just kinda wanna hear from the council as to what their thoughts are as to how we, if we were to give a financial, um, contribution, how we would actually disperse those funds. Would it be we go and we purchase groceries, um, non-perishable or just whatever their needs are over the next eight weeks? Or do we give them the funds? Uh, do we give it all at one lump sum? Or do we, um, allocate X amount of dollars over the next eight weeks? So I would like to just open it up, see what the council's appetite is. And I think at that point, we can make a decision as to how we'd like to vote to move forward. Mr. Mayor, anybody?
Thank you, Councilwoman Frip. So the floor is open for discussion, um, on how to fund this. Uh, from my understanding, should you purchase the items or donate the funds, um, in bulk? With restrictions on those funds, of course, um.
Well, if we purchased, then we would already put the restriction in place because we'd actually be buying the items. But to your point, if we were to give them the funds, would we restrict it just for food items?
So before, um, I'm gonna open this up for discussion, how would we, how would we go about purchasing? I'm, I'm curious how, was your ideal of purchasing versus donating funds over?
So, um, I actually had a conversation with Mayor Pro Tim Brock about that and he had a suggestion. Um, not that I, I mean, I disagree, but, um, eh, maybe he can explain to you his thought process in terms of actually making the purchase, eh, each week for the next eight weeks. Brock, is that what we discussed?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you elaborate?
Yeah, so, thank you, Councilwoman. I don't, to start with, the, the debate between, uh, actually donating perishable goods or funds. I don't really want to donate money because if you put restrictions on it, then that creates unnecessary headache and pa- and paperwork for the recipients. So it would probably be easier from a standpoint of this, from this body to actually purchase the items and then have the items, uh, sent to CAB. My thought was to run an eight-week program at approximately two hundred and fifty dollars a week. That'd be two thousand dollars. And what we would do is we would have staff communicate with KJ's or whoever is the provider and inform them that on Monday, put, here's a list of needs from the Christian Assistance Bridge. Go on this list and give us the best bang for our buck on a weekly basis of two hundred and fifty dollars. Put the mo- put the, put the products together. We will pay you. You deliver the items to the CAB or maybe they could come pick them up. Um, the logistics of it, I'm not exactly sure. But the town could prepay, I assume that wouldn't be an issue, would it, Mr. Driggers? To write whomever, KJ's Food Line, whoever it is that we buy the food from, a two thousand dollar check. Say, we want you to put together a two hundred and fifty dollar gift basket or whatever they wanna call it. And once a week for eight weeks, deliver it to the CAB. That, I think that kinda simplifies things. It gets products. It doesn't, um, it offers a variety of more than beans, rice and corn, which I believe a lot of people like to donate. But you could, one can only eat so much corn or greened beans. So I would ask them to use variety, whether it be pastas, pasta sauce, canned meats, pouch meats like tuna. Um, toiletries, wha- whatever it is that, that the CAB would say they need, those needs may change on a weekly or monthly basis. But that way it supports a local business or businesses. It supports our local food bank. And it, um, doesn't place any restrictions on them because they gave us a nice one-pager. And it, uh, had a bunch of items that they wanted on it. And I don't think it'd be difficult to fill up a basket on a monthly ba- on a weekly basis and, and have the items delivered to the CAB. Is that about, sum it up, Councilwoman Frip?
Um, it, it does. I, you know, um, I really just want us to do something, but I want the council to make the decision as to what that, that is.
Councilwoman Frip and Brock and whoever else who, I mean, we've talked about this and I think it's, I supported it when you, when you initially had the idea. I think it's a great idea, but again, I wanna, I wanna be forward. I wanna be community forward. I wanna be constituent forward. So if we're gonna put funds out there, let's use, I mean, we have both media sources sitting before us tonight. Let's use the media in an effective way to get our community involved. Let the community know if they will spend through the Blythewood community, X number of dollars in purchasing gift bags from KJ's. The town will match that. Well, in this, in, in essence, we're gonna double the donation. So if we're thinking about giving two hundred and fifty dollars a week, we can turn that two hundred and fifty into five hundred dollars a week very easily. Just asking the community to be involved and they're, I think they would jump at the chance. Now, now we've affected even more change.
Now, um, Councilman Kennedy, you mentioned the bags. Um, I, I am not in favor.
No, I, and I think we, I think we can talk to KJ's and say.
Yeah, those bags don't.
Your, your bags have the same things, but CAB doesn't need what's in these bags. Uh, can we think outside the box? Understood. Understood. I'm just saying, if we deal with CAB and KJ's and Food Line, we have two grocery stores in Blythewood. You've talked to both of them. That, that I think, again, let's be forward. Let's be community forward and, and ask. And, I mean, I, I think the Blythewood community is, is begging for something like this. We just need to get them involved.
May I add one comment just because I work with the CABs and the CAS and the world's bells and other things. They usually are able to leverage, leverage dollars into larger purchasing power than you buying directly items because they already have partnerships set up. So if you haven't spoken to the CAB about the dollars versus the donations, I encourage you.
Yep, and, and not to muddy the waters, but, but I'm, I'm in favor of making this holy Blythewood. KJ's, Food Line, CAB, Blythewood Community. Yeah, there are gonna be people outside the community go to KJ's and buy whatever bag it is we put together. But understanding CAB may have an arrangement with, you know, First Harvest or some other food banks to leverage a larger dollar amount. But I am, I am all in on Blythewood stepping up and I think they will. I appreciate the comment.
Yes.
Um, a- and I would just like to ask Councilwoman Hovis, she's the one, um, that brought up the fill the sleigh. Is that, yeah, fill the sleigh. Here, yeah, I'm looking at the flyer. So, um, just any suggestions from you? And I know that we're gonna kinda depend on the media, social media, our own social media. Hopefully that, you know, that we can get the town to actually put this out on, um, our social media to just get as many people as involved so that at least for that one event, fill the sleigh for the Christmas tree lighting, we can get as many donations as possible. I don't wanna belabor this or, or have a, a lengthy discussion. I think that, like I said, uh, Councilwoman Hovis, if you have anything that you'd like to add and then we can just kinda determine the dollar amount that we're willing to contribute. Um, have we decided whether or not, I guess we are making the purchase ourselves? Or is that something that I need to go back to CAB and decide whether or not they would like for us to give the funds to them so that they can leverage it? Or would it be best, as Councilman Brock says, that we actually make the purchase ourselves? That's what I need to know in the dollar amount and then we can.
And if we approve a dollar amount, the details can be worked out on how that's made.
What I would, what I would suggest.
It's, it's messed up. It's idea and the, it's messed up.
And I'm. We would need action to expend public resources. Certainly part of that, the, the council could direct that those details, give, give that responsibility to someone to say, work out the details. And, and that may be you. And then it may be someone else, uh, that says, you know, details are gonna be worked out. Um, if, if, if those details must be a certain way, then that has to be done. I mean, you, you, you couldn't tell you're gonna work out the details and you do and then you go, well, that's.
I don't like the.
You don't like those details. I mean, if you're gonna empower someone, do what you gotta empower. Um, the, uh, but the, the, the fill the sleigh idea is a wonderful idea. Um, one of the things that we had to be careful of, uh, e- even in our staff meeting earlier today, um, we, we don't want to go purchase an Amazon sleigh for two thousand dollars so we can give two thousand dollars away.
No, you, you.
I already have a sleigh.
Use Rich's truck.
There we go.
Well, yeah, Councilwoman Hovis, she had, I'm sorry, you weren't aware of that. She has the sleigh.
First, because of, 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 maybe it's, you know.
No.
Metaphor.
Metaphor.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's wonderful. And, and, and we are glad, you know, in our facility, in town hall. If we, if people, if you want folks to have the ability to drop off things, that's fine. We can assemble those and we can get those wherever they need to go or folks can pick those up. Whatever needs to ha- to happen with that. We just need to understand the logistics and, and that we meet your needs. Again, if, if there's a dollar amount, I think it's appropriate that you would make a, a motion to appropriate X number of dollars to have that. Um, it is, you're not talking about a level that we certainly don't have the resources to do.
Brock, you wanna make a motion?
Since we had the dollar amount.
Well, okay, Councilwoman Frip did, you, you, you mentioned something about matching funds.
I did, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. Apologies. Um, if you were gonna do a matching funds, obviously it'd need to be up to.
You can leave that out of your motion. I would just like.
Well, I'm, I'm just, it, it, it's two different, two different procedures. Either you, well, we can do three things. We could donate, we could, we could write a check. That's very easy. We can purchase goods. That is slightly more cumbersome, but also relatively easy. Or three, we could tie our dollars to. but also relatively easy, or three, we could tie our dollars to the generosity of the public, which may or may not show up. I'm not casting stones, but, you know, times are tough for a lot of people.
I, I'm not, I'm not so in favor of the matching funds, because for me, that means that the community has to do first, in order for us to do, they have to do something, and then we, in order for us to match it, and I just think that that's, that, that may take too much time.
So, lead by example.
Exactly.
Okay, so-
So, who wants to make a motion?
So, before we make a motion-
Okay.
I know we focus on the CAB, and I said it in the conversation before, I think, to you, Ms. Fripp, um, don't forget about the churches that also serve the same people in this community. Um, so you do have other food banks as well, so, in that consideration, I would ask the council to consider, um, also providing some funding to those churches that also serve those people in this community as well. So, you do have Macedonia, Round Top, and the food bank at Romapun Road.
Mr. Mayor, how many of those food banks are inside the town limit?
It, that, that, you focus on the town limit, I'm focusing on feeding the people in Blythewood, so you're saying people, you, how are you going to leverage those people that go to the CAB and say they're not coming from outside the town limit? I hear what you're saying, I understand your argument when it comes to town limit, but if you truly going to support the community and feed people?
Well, that's predicated upon the assumption that the CAB turns away people unless they live in the town limit, which we all know is not true.
I did not say that.
No, no, but-
I'm using what you just said.
No, well, I, I am in favor of one centralized, local point where people know where the food's going to.
That's your opinion, I'm putting mine's out there as well. I respect your opinion, respect mine's, I'm putting it out there that, don't forget about the other food banks in this community, that some of the same people, that if the CAB runs out, will go to those churches. I seen it.
One thing I did like about CAB, when I spoke with him, is that apparently they work with some of these other organizations and churches, and they all do kind of a, you know, if the CAB is short, uh, they come through, or, or, matter of fact, Kate told me that if someone were to call, let's say, one of the churches in the middle of the night and CAB was not there, they have like a code or something like that, where they can actually get into CAB, and, and the items that are needed can be given to those families. So, to me, it seems like they work together.
Can I give one more piece of information, maybe in the conversation, I'm sorry. Um, the CAB is organized by a conglomerate of multiple churches in the area, and services Blythewood, Ridgway, and Elgin, and then also if you look on their website, you'll see the zip codes that they serve all from the local CAB location.
Yep, thank you. But it's the consensus of this council, whichever direction you want to go in, feeding people is feeding people, I just want to put that out there, that you do have others in the area that also service and feed. But we'll be looking for a motion, uh, in direction.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the council allocate up to $2,500 to CAB for the council's directed community food drive, with the details of that to be worked out between Councilwoman Fripp and the town manager, Ed Diggers, and communication on those details be forwarded to the media and other council members.
Yes, sir, motion made, looking for a second.
Councilman McKendrick, would you be up for a friendly amendment that would limit the amount spent on a weekly basis to no more than $250?
Is that what we're determining, that we're going to do it weekly versus a full-
I, I, I would leave it alone because it's an eight-week period, I don't want to hamstring some details, but, I mean-
It doesn't, there's, there's, eight weeks was just easy, 250 times eight's 2,000, that was just why eight was.
Sure, sure, no, no, I don't, I don't-
But now you, now you've gone to 2,500, so you could go to 12 weeks, no, 10 weeks, sorry.
Yeah, I would let those details be worked out.
Okay.
All right, motion made, looking for a second.
I second.
Second made, any discussion?
For the period of time for the food drive, which I believe is-
Through January.
To the end of January.
Okay. You good, Mr. Diggers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any discussion? All right, here and now, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the, under old business discussion and approval of town events, action item, Mr. Diggers.
Yes, sir, I'm, um, I'm-
You got yours, Pete?
I'm sending around to you, this is the document that you received back at the, the meeting in October, um, regarding the communication from Jordan Langland, with notes and recommendations in that, um, you, you may have already, you may have had your previous copy with you this evening, but we wanted to make sure you did have that, uh, this evening. We are okay if you're not ready to make a decision relative to this, if that's the case. Uh, I'm, I'm just want to make sure that we are all of the understanding that, um, other than those events that we funded through the end of this year, there are no appropriations of resources in our budget, once we hit January. We've got our brave budgeted, we've got the tree lighting budgeted, we, we handle Veterans Day, and those things that got us to that point, all of that was appropriated by you, and those funds were available. But, the, the other dollars are, are, are still restricted, and, um, if, if you are at a point that you need to give us direction, or you believe that you need to do that in some other fashion, we're fine with that. But it typically, for a town event, uh, it typically takes a minimum of about eight weeks for the planning process, or, or something like that. It's, we, we, we can't get to January and be instructed that we would like to do, I'm giving example, we want, we want to do a Martin Luther King weekend event, we couldn't plan it in that amount of time.
Sure.
And so, we're, we're just looking for direction, uh, and we've provided you the data to hopefully help you in giving us that direction.
Would you refresh, sorry?
Would you refresh councils and the public's memory of the events that are listed on page one, which of these events have been funded, have, and/or have occurred, so that those aren't ones that we would be considering in the current fiscal year?
Yes, sir, uh, Jordan, I'm going to have to rely on you a bit here as well, uh, the Shred Day was funded, so I'm starting at the bottom, Shred Day was funded and hailed, Veterans Day was funded and hailed, Christmas Parade was funded and planned, uh, Tree Lighting funded and planned, uh, Purple Heart Day was funded and-
That's all, any complaints? That's it.
And so, Ju- June 10th, movies in the park, red, white, and blue, uh, is not funded and no plans of delay.
So, those are the three that are up for discussion tonight, on this list.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And, and new, a- any new ads we want to, we would want to add?
If there's something else that you'd like to have added, it's just, we have no other town events funded and more than plans being made at this point.
So, Mr. Diggers, just for recap, so you're looking at an eight-week window?
Jordan, is that a fair, I mean-
About a two-month window on planning?
Twelve weeks, I mean, something like red, white, and blue, that's a really long length of time.
But I think some of our, um, something like Martin Luther King event, that would have some-
All right, council, so before you, this afternoon, I know we talked about events in lengthy part over the last year now. Staff needs direction on funding, I think funding is the most important thing, so that folks like Jordan and other members of the staff can start their planning process, pay for things, um, and plan accordingly. We could give some direction tonight, or y'all could give feedback by the December 15th meeting, would that still give time?
We're not able to do a January event, but you make some-
Do we have?
No.
We don't have a January thing on here.
Well, if you, no, if you added one.
As, as a suggestion.
Yes.
Because in the original budget-
Yeah, we do have a Martin Luther King.
And, and so, yeah, for those events, you know, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at a July date, June date, and movies in the park starts-
It's a quarterly, quarterly.
When did it start?
It's like-
March.
March.
But, and I-
We still plan, we may have time to plan that.
So, let me say this, if, if there's a Martin Luther King dinner, I mean, that's not as tightly planned as, um, Fourth of July, red, white, and blue.
It's not, it's just not as many movies in the park.
Because it would be here, more than likely, like the Purple Heart event, kind of the same planning.
Something to, to that, now, again, to their protein Brock's earlier comment, that is not only that list-
It's not.
But it is an event that we discussed during budget process of, 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 of the event.
And again, I, I, I think we're kind of skirting the bigger issue, which is, uh, the council paused events in the park that would go over into evening hours, dark hours, um, and I think everybody here knows the, the reasoning behind that. I would suggest that, that this be part of strategic planning, I mean, we, we've got to come up with an overarching plan of what council's willing to allow in the park and what hours of those. As I went, and, and, Mr. Diggers, I called you, and we had a conversation about this, as I went through these, I couldn't come up with a good discussion point to get off of go, because I think council has to speak to the overarching issue of, I mean, we can say, yeah, we're going to fund movies in the park, but then, and, until we lift the moratorium on, um, the pause we put on-
Correct.
Then, then we're kind of fighting against ourselves. So, I, I think this is part of strategic planning in January, if you have asked my opinion.
Uh, Councilman McKendrick, I, uh, and Ms. Mary, you can, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but in Juneteenth, a daytime event, it cuts off until-
It goes over, it, no, ma'am, it goes over into the, to the evening hours as well, yes, ma'am.
I just thought that was-
I have a comment.
Ms. Holgus.
If I'm allowed to talk now. Is it so much a question of daytime and nighttime, as much as it's a question of, how was security incorporated in the design of the park? Was it designed to have a capacity for the number of people that will come to the Fourth of July event? In my opinion, we should do, if we haven't already done it, a security audit of how the park was built, its intended use, and then make the decision secondary, secondarily, about the time of day, the time of night. Yes, I, I agree that nighttime is a more dangerous time, but I think we're sort of jumping the gun, if we don't go back to the beginning and ask ourselves, what was this park designed to do, what can we safely accommodate so that we can say we've done our due diligence? When we put forward a plan for be it daytime or nighttime, and something may very well happen, I mean, there's not 100%, just like you can't prevent fraud, you can't prevent violent crime anywhere in this country.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, Councilman McKendrick, I agree to make this part of the strategic plan in, um, January moving forward, if that's a consensus of the council, that way staff will have directive moving forward after that January meeting, a more put-together piece, uh, information.
Glad for us to do that, and I think what would be appropriate is a motion to hold, to, to include it in the discussion items for the strategic planning session, and so it won't show back up on your agenda until we get to that.
Councilman McKendrick, would you?
Sure, I, I would make that motion, and before I do, and I'm glad Jordan's here, and you'll certainly communicate with your staff, th- this is not a punt it down the road situation where we're, we're sending the message to Jordan or anybody else, we don't appreciate what they do in planning events, it, it's a matter of, we, we have to be strategic about what, what we're going to do.
We've clearly communicated that, no issues there on understanding the intent. Our intent is just to make sure that when a decision is made, we need sufficient time-
Time, time to do it, absolutely.
I would make the motion to move the discussion on town events related to the 2526 budget year to the strategic planning date yet to be determined in January of this, of '26.
Thank you, sir, motion made, looking for a second.
Second.
Second made, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm sorry, Councilman McKendrick, I'm going to disagree with you, I think that this is exactly a punt it down the road situation, this was brought in front of us in September, if I'm not mistaken, here we are in November, and now we've punted it again to January. We know where, we know where some of the issues lie, what, you know, people can't, for some reason, seem to behave themselves when the sun goes down. I mean, look at WIS, WLTX, The Voice, Robert's Paper, I, which name escapes me.
The Chronicle.
Yeah, The Chronicle. Everybody is documenting people, whether it's youth or adults, I know no one's forgot about Halloween and the massive bonfire that took place a mile and a half up the road, where hundreds of cars and damn near a thousand youth and adults gathered. Three teenagers were shot. And we're just, we're just going to keep punting this down the road. I mean, when the sun goes down, apparently people just can't behave, and I don't think it's going to make a difference whether we address it tonight, or we address it in January. I have serious concerns about Juneteenth, thank you, Jordan, for pointing out the fact that $20,000 from last year's Juneteenth walked away, and it can't be accounted for, and yet you're going to ask for another $25,000 for Juneteenth? You're not getting my vote on that, not till somebody tells me where that $20,000 went. Maybe it went to the sheriff and the fire department. The point is, we're tasked to make difficult choices, difficult decisions, whether people like it or not. If you read everything on Facebook, there's a lot of people in this town that don't like me, but Facebook only accounts for a certain few that are, that are brave enough to be keyboard warriors. We have to make decisions, I think we should address this tonight. We know what the problems are, to address what Ms., what Councilwoman Hovis said, if you want to do a security audit or an operational assessment, do you wait till after January to do that, or do you do it between now and then?
I would.
And if you wait till January, then you're two months later.
I don't know why it hasn't already been done, it's part of a typical emergency management type planning activity.
Well, ask the emergency manager. Has it been done, Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Proton Brock, what I'm not going to do tonight, I am not the, I am not the town's emergency manager, okay? And before you say something, and then we're going to move on, that is my professional career, like your career is in accounting, so let's watch that.
Well, no, you've, you've just reminded us, and the discussion's not over, sir.
There's a motion in a second.
You've just reminded us multiple times, how you're an emergency manager.
Discussion is over.
No, sir.
There's a motion in a second on the floor, and discussion, Ms. Fripp, you have it.
So, would we then amend them?
No, that's up to Councilman McKendrick.
Councilman Brock, to your point, when you say we could address it this evening, how, how would you propose to address that this evening? I, I, I mean, how would you, and, and-
I would not fund these events for fiscal year 2526, that's how I would address it.
We're not doing that tonight.
But that- But that, that is not the whole, that is not the whole rhyme of this, sir. You want a planning, you want an inclusive planning piece. Council is planning this right now to be in a better situation, to make an informed decision.
And Mr. Mayor, while I don't disagree with the statement you just made, we've already acted on these events.
Yes.
They're not funded.
They're not funded.
So, so there is, there was action taken.
Yes.
And the action was, this council chose not to fund these events. So to Ms. Hovas's earlier point, my vote on that would not change until strategically, something changed about the use of the park we're holding them in. To my earlier conversation with you, Mr. Driggers, I, my, I am not a fan of the town sponsoring something past sundown in this park because the last three times we've done it, Ms. Page is now on the other side of the table. I can tell you from personal experience, I was on the phone with Ms. Page. I was traveling back to Blythewood from Clemson. I was on the phone with Ms. Page for the last movies in the park, just checking up because I wasn't going to be able to be here, and I wanted to attend. She informed me everything was going great. A movie was playing. There was a small crowd of kids over by the playground. Didn't seem to be a big threat. She was a little bit nervous because of the crowd that had begun to gather, but the movie was playing and the attendance was good. My conversation with Ms. Page was, we need to be cognizant of sundown, when it gets dark. In ten minutes, it went from a good family-attended event to mayhem. When I talked to Ms. Page the second time on the phone, I felt bad that I could not be there because of the panic that was in her voice. And my recommendation to her was, you need to take cover for yourself. Go to a safe spot for yourself. I don't want to be put in that situation as a councilman. I don't want the constituents in Blythewood to be put in that situation. So if the discussion tonight is, are we going to fund events that take us past sundown, Brock, I would agree with you. If we want to hash it out tonight, my vote would be that those events would not happen.
They would not happen as town-sponsored events?
As town-sponsored events. But that's what we're talking about. Yeah, we're talking about town-sponsored events in the park or on town-owned property.
So before, before, I always give citizens, and if there's someone that wants to speak on this because this affects you all, there's someone, raise their hand, and I always do this. So, sir, please state your name.
My name is Lawrence Moore. I live in Blythewood. I've been living here for five years.
Your mic may not be...
It's on. It's on.
It's on.
I've been living here for five years, and I've heard all the incidents that went on over in the park. I've heard all the situations. You're going to say, after nighttime, they have crime during the day. It comes a time when parents need to be responsible. And I know that it came before the council about putting a curfew, and it was voted down. For what reason, I have no clue. If you can't be responsible for your kids at an event, then they don't need to be there. That is not discrimination. That is the rule. Now, whatever needs to be done, I don't think everybody in the community should suffer because of the few fools out here. And if we're going to just shut down everything, then we shut down everything. Don't have not one event. But this badgering and going back and forth makes no sense at all. So either we're going to do it as a city, or as a town, or whatever you want to call yourself, a village, or we're not going to do anything. And that's where I stand on it.
Yes, sir.
Certainly appreciate your comment.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Um, oh, yes, sir. I couldn't see who stood up. Evening, sir.
Jamal Mosley, resident of Blythewood. I live in Cobblestone. It's a tense topic. However, everything could become possible with good planning. And one thing that we don't have in the town of Blythewood right now is we don't, we don't have a town emergency manager. That's something you can consider in future budgets, budgets to where that is a full-time position, or whether it's a dual-headed position that receives a stipend. But without an emergency manager, you don't have an emergency incident action plan. So not only for the future town events, but for any mass gatherings in town, day or night, there is no existing plan. There's no, there's no, there's nothing within the town statutes that follows the National Incident Management System, period, which is why you have public safety issues and why our town is an easy lick for teenagers who can organize an event from five hundred to eight hundred people. So as a resident, I'm asking, because I was sitting here typing an email as a chairman of a planning commission to Mr. Driggers and to Mr. Balthazar, but since everything is hot right now, let's talk about it here from a concerned resident. Blythewood needs an emergency, an incident emergency action plan that follows the National Incident Management System that involves our emergency services. And before I close, excellent that you brought that rezoning up, Councilman McKendrick, because what rezoning does, when they throw a house at every tree on the outskirts of our town, is, I talked about it, and I still talk about it a lot. It puts a strain on infrastructure. It changes the population within the education system. It changes the population for those schools, and it puts a strain on our existing emergency services, where we only got a handful of firefighters on duty at a time, and even less sheriffs patrolling the area at any given moment. So let's take your emotions out of moving this town forward, and always go back to planning. You don't, Mr. Driggers just told you, y'all don't have to rush and make a decision, but at least agree to, to, to make a plan. And that's where it all begins. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Page?
Erica Page, and I'm a resident of Cobblestone. Yes, you probably have my address on record. Just really want to take the opportunity here to encourage having a conversation and continuing to have that conversation. You shut this down, and you're going to have us become stale and nonexistent. Somebody else is going to come in and take over, like another municipality. So I would really encourage that you have conversations, to have ideas. I will email you some of my ideas. But to continue on the basis of shutting it down, it's not, that's not changing anything. So tonight, I really feel like you do not need to make a decision. You already have a decision, okay? Nothing's happening with regards to those events, but look for solutions, suitable solutions, and solutions that will fit the community and encourage positive engagement and for people to attend. So again, I'll share with you guys my experiences in the past couple of weeks as a parent of a thirteen-year-old, as well as a fifteen-year-old. And so perhaps some of those can be taken into consideration with regards to making a decision about this for the upcoming year in 2026. So thank you. Thanks for opening the floor for us to speak, and, yeah, great.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Driggers, just a point of clarification or order, whichever it would be, based on, off of Mr. Mosley's comments, whether or not we have events in the park during the daylight hours, or evening hours, or night hours, that would not at all be a planning commission task.
No.
Just want to clarify, for those people watching on TV, he referenced drafting an email from the chairman of the planning commission. That would be well outside the bounds of what a planning commission is charged with doing.
Can I address Councilman McKendrick? Because I believe we have a misunderstanding.
Not on our part, sir. I just clarified it with the manager.
I want to say, I was sending an email, asking, as I do all the time, I was sending an email asking how to best approach council, make a, how to set forth the most legal and ethical way to make a recommendation to council to consider a town emergency manager's position and to make you aware of just what I did, because I have a degree in emergency management.
Understood, sir. I'm not, I'm not trying to debate you.
All right, let's, let's...
My point is, that's not a planning commission function.
No, I didn't, I didn't say it.
Okay, all right.
My comment was how to best approach, and I said, I figured I'd just approach it as...
I'm going to go ahead, call it back to order. Let's get us back, back drawn in. Definitely duly noted, sir. I work with you on some things, so I know we, we in that field, and we, I know the passion for that as a first responder. But I know, I'm going to say this because oftentimes it gets thrown out by some of my colleagues. When I first took the seat, hmm, nothing, you're going to hear this. We got to be respectful up here. This is a moment for us to hit the reset button. Whether some individuals want to do that or not, this is a true reset moment. We all want to move this town forward. We all want to have events. We all want to make a safe community. This community wants to get out and do things. We all hear it, whether it's from our, our friends or people in the grocery store. We all get emails and phone calls about this, and I think that we have really started something moving forward to where we can have the dialogue. I agree with Councilman McKendrick. We can set that tone. We don't have to make a decision tonight. We can't make a decision tonight. There's pieces that's going to be missing. But there's one important factor that I had to learn as mayor. I can't be mayor, police officer, firefighter, and emergency manager all in one day. I can advise you, just as many of you advise each of us in your professions, but you don't do it for the town. So we have to have the tools, to Mr. Driggers' point, to do a lot of these things. Chairman Mosley, we have tools to do our job, staff to do our job. You all have that as well in your profession. The only recourse we have is to work with the Richland County Sheriff's Department and have them come in and assess things for security reasons. And if you disagree with them, you disagree with them, sir. That doesn't, everybody has an opinion up here. But we have to entrust in the men and women that are sworn to protect us, we pay taxes for, to do their job. And if it's not done correctly, then we got something to talk about. But we have to entrust them to do their job. And if they tell us, just like the parade, I ask the question, do we need more security for the parade? The Richland County Sheriff's Department say you're good to go. Is there any increased cost? No, we keeping it the same. We're good. You have to trust that. Now, you can buy more. They will simply, they will easily give you more if you cut the check. But if they're giving you advice, sound advice, professional advice, that's all you have to go on. And that's all I'm going to say about this, because I think this council, the majority of us, want to do things. We want to work together. This is a chance to really work together. And hopefully, for the ones or twos that may have an issue with that, we can talk about it offline if you want to. But I want to move forward and move this town forward as best as possible. With that being said, Mr. Driggers, I know we got a motion, a second, we were in discussion to move this to January, add this as part of our strategic planning conversation. I'll be looking for a vote. Matter of fact, roll call vote, Ms. Durs.
Point of, point of clarification, Mr. Driggers, would this be moving this item to the January planning session as an action item, or just simply a discussion?
No action items, that's strategic planning session.
There you go.
Okay.
Roll call, Ms. Durs.
Councilwoman Hovas?
Can't vote present. You got to vote yere or nay. Ms. Durs, did you have it, or you want me to repeat it? I made the motion to move the town event discussion to the strategic planning that's going to be held in January on a date to be determined for the purposes of how it affects our twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
As opposed to voting on that tonight?
Any of this question, ma'am?
Yep, we're going to openly discuss that in the strategic planning, put out every ideal possible. Staff will work, we'll work together before that time come up, so we have everything in line.
Thank you. Councilman Brock?
No.
Councilwoman Fripp?
Yes.
Councilman McKendrick?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, have it. Next item on the agenda is new business. Item A, nomination and election of a mayor pro tem. This is something that we do at every point of a, of an election cycle. At this point, I will open the floor for nominations. At this moment, I will make the first call for a nomination and nominate Councilman McKendrick.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to place in the nomination Councilwoman Fripp.
All righty. So, all right, nominations are closed. How we have to do this, since there's two nominations, we have to vote on the first nomination, which is Councilman McKendrick.
Don't you have to ask the members if they accept the nomination first?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a given. Yes, they have to be willing to serve.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, I certainly appreciate the nomination, but I feel my effectiveness as a council member, I have just as much effect as a council member sitting here, not being a mayor pro tem or holding that position. I do appreciate your confidence, and then I will speak to my nomination of Councilwoman Fripp at the same time. I think, to Mr. Driggers' point earlier, Mr. Mayor, to your point, to several of our points up here, this is a, a new direction here in Blythewood. Going to council manager form of government is no small task, and I think Ms. Fripp has two years left in her current term. I think Councilman Brock has done a phenomenal job being mayor pro tem for the past two years. And I just, I would certainly like to see Ms. Fripp move into that position as we change form of government. And Ms. Fripp, I guess I will ask you, will you accept that nomination?
I will.
Great.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kendrick, for the nomination.
All right. So...
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to cast my support for Councilwoman Fripp, and I think it's fair to say, Andrea, that when we first sat down at the table, you might have felt some sort of way, as we say.
I did.
But I can honestly say that over the past two years, getting to know Councilwoman Fripp has probably been one of the highlights of, of being on council. I didn't say it's a highlight in my life. Now, don't, don't, don't let your britches get too big.
Thank you.
But she clearly has a passion for public service. She has a passion for this town, and I think that she will absolutely make a fantastic mayor pro tem. You have my full support.
All right, thank you. So motion, nomination on the floor originally declined, which leaves Councilwoman Fripp. And the nomination period is closed, and we're going to open it up for a vote. All right.
You can either have a vote to, to accept my acclamation. You could either have a vote to accept my acclamation.
Unanimous consent.
Yes, sir.
Or unanimous consent, or you can vote it, I mean, any of those procedures are correct.
Okay, so, I'm looking from my left to right, I think unanimous consent is really in order for this one? No, don't, it's okay, you're gonna, you'll get it, it's alright. Alright, so, good, okay, I know from what we talked about earlier, so...
Alright, motion for unanimous consent.
So, I'm, motion for unanimous consent?
Second.
Alright. Vote? Okay, yep, so, we'll make a vote, so, all in favor of Ms. Fripp serving as mayor pro temp, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, congratulations, mayor pro temp.
Thank you.
Little bit different from what me and Mr. Driggers talked about, so, the way, you told me, but we got it worked out. Alright, next item on the agenda, discussion and approval of the 2026 town meeting calendar, action item. Mr. Driggers, you have that?
I'm glad to share information with you, the calendar was developed by our municipal clerk, and I do want to point out that the calendar that you have in front of you is what we would recommend, based on your tradition of holding meetings on the fourth Monday of each month, but I have a responsibility to let you know that you have an ordinance on your books that says you will meet on the last Monday of every month.
Yep.
Not the fourth Monday, your ordinance indicates the last Monday, and so there will be four times a year that that would fall, on the fifth Monday, not the fourth. We are proposing that all of your meetings would be as you have traditionally held them on the fourth, if that is your, that is how you wanna move forward, we will bring to you at your next meeting, first reading of an ordinance, amending that to the fourth Monday of each month.
Why would we restrict ourselves to the fourth Monday? Why wouldn't we just state that we'll have a meeting on a Monday at some point in the month? Because the fourth Monday could be Memorial Day, and we're not gonna have a meeting on Memorial Day, we'll punt it to Tuesday, so...
Statute requires that you meet once a month.
Yeah, it doesn't say when, though.
It does not.
So, I would recommend that to make the, if you're gonna make a amendment to the ordinance, that it just states that council will meet one month, will meet once per year, per the calendar approved in prior fiscal year.
I mean, I mean, that's...
Say that again, please, please say that again, no, no, I'm being...
Well, it's like he said, state law is silent on when you have to meet, the only thing is that we are required to meet once a month, so instead of saying, we're going to meet on the fourth Monday of a month, which may or may not be a holiday, Labor Day, I believe, falls on a Monday, Memorial Day, I believe, falls on a Monday, Christmas could fall on a Monday. So, just in lieu of restricting ourselves to the fourth Monday, just simply state that council will meet one time per month at the, at a, based on the pre-approved calendar in the prior fiscal year, prior calendar year, not fiscal year, something like that.
That can be done, but I think either the state statute and/or the town ordinance also requires that the meeting calendar be approved for regular meetings at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, prior to the calendar year.
Right.
Which we could then use this calendar.
Yes, yes.
So approving this calendar would...
Then you can use any calendar you want, as long as you've got one Monday meeting every month, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be Monday, because if you look at this calendar, there's actually a meeting on Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, because of a holiday.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's why I would eliminate the word Monday.
Your current ordinance says on the last Monday of the month, or as approved by council.
Okay.
So, we can do that any number of ways, as long as you are scheduling and conduct one meeting a month, you are meeting state statute.
Given the way we schedule special calls, we clearly do at least one meeting a month.
One regular meeting a month.
Right.
Okay, so, for this one, so, two-part conversation?
Two-part conversation.
Okay.
Tonight's action is to adopt the calendar.
Yes.
Presented. If you adopt the calendar, we've heard you, Pete will work on that language, and we'll have at your December 15 meeting, a first reading, amending that ordinance.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the 2026 meeting calendar as presented by staff.
Thank you, sir, looking for a second? I'll make the second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any ayes, ayes have it. Thank you. Next item is item C, Stanley Martin Home Letter Credit Release for Abney Hills Phase Three and Ashley Oaks Phase Nine A and Nine B, action item.
Mr. Thursday? This item is brought to you for action, the work required under the letter of credit has been completed, it has been inspected by Richland County, and has been approved, and so we are recommending the release of that letter of credit at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Show motion.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any ayes, ayes have it. Sorry, I thought you had... Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Actually, also Phase Eight of Ashley Oaks.
So, Phase Eight is in this?
Yes, sir, there's actually three total phases that are completed, so it is, Abney Hills Phase Three is dated, Ashley Oaks Phase Nine A and Nine B, and Ashley Oaks Phase Eight.
And we'll have to do that next month, so we can post it?
Yes, we have to do Eight next month, 'cause we only post it what you see this afternoon, so, do us a favor, make sure you get back with staff, with Mr. Driggers and his staff, and we'll make sure that that's on our December 15th.
Fifteenth, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, sorry about, sorry about that. Why are you up there? Do you have any updates and things we need to know about the neighborhood, good or bad?
No, they've all been completed, constructed as planned, and approved by the County of Richland, as Mr. Driggers so noted, they're totally built out, and...
Can you...
And we have some very good residents in their town of Blythewood.
Do you know if they have officially formed their HOA?
That is in process.
Okay, so they're still...
That Ashley Oaks is in process.
So they're still under MJS management until they form?
Yes.
Okay.
And we will be, for probably a few months, before they get all the legal documents completed, and, you know, actual, the HOA Association members, so it'll take a little bit of time. Of course, Abney Hills has quite a few more phases to go before that occurs. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
And I will...
Yep, make sure you get what staff have. Okay, so...
Mr. Mayor, just one more question for the Stanley Martin, if I could?
Yes.
Abney Hills?
Yes.
How many total phases will you have in Abney Hills?
Abney Hills, we actually have Phase Four is the last phase that we have, but there's four phases in Phase Four, so, we are right now constructing Phase C, D, Phase A and B have just been accepted by Richland County, the PTO has, and their operations and management of the water and sewer systems have just been accepted.
Okay, now, I said one more, but I got a couple. Mount Valley Road, the connector on Mount Valley Road that you hit through Abney that has the squawk box and the gate on it, that, are there any other roads on the east side of Abney Hills, outside of Mount Valley Road connection? And the reason I'm asking, for transparency, that's the next item we're talking about, all that property that the county's trying to rezone, to my knowledge, Abney Hills does not have any direct pass, other than that one on Mount Valley Road, is that correct?
That's correct, and Mount Valley Road is limited access.
It is.
It's emergency services access.
And will all of your phases in Abney Hills be under one HOA?
Yes.
I knew that's where it was a couple of years ago, I just wasn't sure, that's just the way.
And right now, the MJS...
MJS, correct.
As our management company, of course, we serve as the HOA until it totally gets closed.
Councilman McKendrick, isn't Mount Valley, isn't that a private road as well? Or portions owned by...
Portions.
Portions.
What if they decided to close that?
You would have a lawsuit, you would have a lawsuit.
It is. It is at the top, at the top up there.
Yeah, and it was primarily due to some surveying mistakes, years and years and years ago, so, if that property owner chose to close that portion of the road, clearly the county would, it would trigger a lawsuit, but, yes, part of it, small parts of it are private.
Yep.
And it is gated...
It is, yes, ma'am.
Because of the residents who requested it to be built. EMS has that number, and murder of the fire department, man also.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Alrighty, all hearts and minds are settled, we'll move to executive session. Oh, yep, sorry, D, item D. Alright, so we'll move to item D, and that was, my pen marked, I wrote over my pen mark. Yep, on the directive, I'm sorry, I scratched that out moving forward, that's the directive to staff, to draft the letter to Richland County on the entire council's behalf, expressing opposition of the rezoning. We talked about that in discussion a little bit earlier, any further discussion of directives to staff?
Do I need to, does it need to be a motion now for that direction?
Yep.
I would make that motion.
Alright, motion made, is there a second? Second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, what if I don't wanna sign off on this letter? What if I would rather reach out individually, as I know several members on Richland County Council, and address them privately in a more friendly nature, versus having hurling a brick at Richland County Council, when nine of them don't even really step foot in Blythewood, because it's not within their district? So, I'm asking if this motion were to pass, do I, am I afforded the right to not put my name on that letter?
I don't think, I don't think your name was going to go on the letter anyways, the letter was going to be, the letter was going to be drafted by town staff at council's direction, so the letter was going to be sent on behalf of the town. You can certainly vote against...
Well, I know that.
Writing the letter, and, yes, you can still go and contact any council member you want at any time, about how you feel about it, so, I mean, I...
Which I agree, Brock, we should all do.
Still gonna, I think all of us are gonna do that still.
But right, my understanding of the motion and of the discussion earlier, and I've even started drafting the letter already, I mean, it's basically that the town is aware of a rezoning request for these parcels that are adjacent to some town parcels in the town boundaries, the ones in the town boundaries are zoned rural, the ones in the county are currently zoned, I think agricultural, and HM, I can't remember what HM stands for right now, in the county zoning?
Homestead, maybe?
Yeah, homestead, correct, and that, you know, basically it would be council's position that the rezoning not go forward, and that the zoning stay consistent with the current zoning that is in the town parcel, we've heard other comments tonight about infrastructure, and the population of those places would affect the schools that are already here, so it sounds like, I mean, I'm gleaning that that's sort of council's position as well, if that motion is approved, for staff to put together a letter on behalf of the town opposing that rezoning request. And again, right now, it's just in front of the Planning Commission at Richland County, so, it's, you know, like here, the Planning Commission in Richland County would just make a recommendation, one way or another, to the county council.
So the letter's going to the Planning Commission, it's not going directly to county council?
To the council.
Oh, it's not going to Planning Commission?
No.
Would this letter not carry more weight if people actually put their names on it? That's a political question, you don't have to answer.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean...
Opining out loud.
Sure, I mean, I think whatever comments are made here tonight certainly are recorded, I mean, anybody can go back and see how council, be council as a whole, whatever the vote may be, feels about it, but from my standpoint in drafting the letter, the letter would say, town council is opposed to rezoning, so it wouldn't, I mean, I, you know, whether it carries weight, or what weight it would carry, the letter that I intend to draft would be clear that it is coming from town council, based on the will of the majority of town council.
And that letter would be signed by Ed Driggers and you?
Correct, probably the interim town manager.
Yep, okay, that was mine, too.
But to your point, we each could go and state our own opposition, you know, yeah, and should, to this, if that...
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor Pro Temp, oh, I'm sorry, Brock, it wasn't my intent to use your word, to have Pete draw up a letter that seemed like a brick, it should come as no surprise, I would hope it would come no surprise to the county, where Blythewood stood, but we did not do this for Blythewood Farms, we, at the time, I wasn't on council, but they reached out to the developer and tried to reason that way, and here's a chance, once again, to get in front of it, so, yeah, it wasn't my intent to throw a brick at council.
The flaw with Blythewood Farms wasn't stopping the development, the flaw was never annexing it into the town.
Understood.
Alright, so, it sounds like we kinda...
Was there a motion?
There was a motion, hang on a second.
Yep, so, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Thursday.
Councilwoman Hovis?
Yes.
Councilman Brock?
This is the time I wanna vote president.
That you wanna do?
That's what I want, that's why I wanna vote president, it doesn't matter, yes.
Councilwoman Fripp?
Yes.
Councilman McKendrick?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is executive session, pruient the South Carolina Code thirty-four dash seventy-two items to discuss tonight, discussion and negotiations incident to propose contractual agreement for assessment and recommendations regarding manner of operations to establish a financial break-even operational business plan requested by... and recommendations regarding manner of operations to establish a financial break-even operational business plan requested by our interim town manager. Mr. Driggers, what is the gentleman's name that will be coming in the meeting?
Mr. William Louder.
Alright, and attending that meeting, um, by request is, Mr., what is his last name, I'm sorry?
Louder.
Louder, Mr. Louder. Second item, item B, discussion of negotiation incident proposed to contractual agreement for professional search and recruitment services for a town manager. Be looking for a motion to enter in the executive session.
So moved, sir, and can I add a five-minute recess?
Yes, sir, five-minute recess, looking for a second. I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
For a motion to reconvene in open session? Motion made, motion seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We're now back in open session. Counsel, are there any items requiring a vote following executive session?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Counselor McKendrick.
I would like to make the following motion: That the town of Blythewood enter into an agreement with Parker Poe for a business operations optimization analysis for the manor in an amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand dollars for phases one and two.
Motion made, motion seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Can I clarify one thing about the motion? Is the motion to enter into the contract or enter into negotiations and bring a contract back for council to approve? Because it's my understanding we haven't actually looked at the contract.
Would be to get the contract and bring it back to council because that contract we have not seen.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
December fifteenth meeting. Okay. All right, so do you need to re-clarify? Okay. All right, motion made, motion seconded, any discussion?
No discussion.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make another motion.
Yes, sir.
That town council enter into consulting agreement with Parker Poe as previously presented to council for an executive search for a town manager.
All right, thank you, sir.
And that money is actually budgeted in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Yes, sir. All right, motion made. Looking for a second.
Counselor McKendrick, would you take a friendly amendment to not exceed the budgeted line item of thirty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
All right, second.
Any discussion?
None.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Sound move.
Motion made, seconded. I will second. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.